Thank you.
I wonder if they can, I don't think they can almost see. I can try to see. I can try to see. I can highlight for you.
It's definitely not best to have the very facility you practice on not be available during this.
Right, I looks like we could get started. Do we have anybody for? All right, well, welcome everybody to the February meeting. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda? Okay, get a second.
Second.
All in favor, regrettably. And just approve, we do not have anybody for open forum. Approval consent agenda, have a motion to approve consent agenda.
Move the, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Can I get a second?
One second.
All in favor, Adrian. All, all in favor, Adrian. Oppose the same. Did I get a motion to approve the regular open session minutes last meeting? Every second.
One second, I had a couple of corrections.
Discussion.
But they were just spelling errors.
Anything else on minutes? Right, all in favor, approve of the minute, free for hand. Transfer and payment bills, any discussion there?
Just out of my own curiosity, why do we see such a jump every January in our, in the balance?
Well, that's when we have our taxes are paid. We get all the personal property taxes, real estate taxes, R and E, railroad, but, what, what if he comes to there?
All right, can I get a motion to approve the transfer payment of bills?
Oh, I have a question. Did, did it get resolved, our issue with the I saw the water bill, water and sewer, can we get that all resolved about was a billing issue with the sprinkler and?
We did, they adjusted, the water district adjusted our bill to show that we weren't using setback for that. And they refunded, I'm not sure at what point, but that's been probably a couple of months ago where we were refunded.
Now, can I get a motion to approve the transfer payment of bill?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer.
I have a second.
A second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, Adrian, both saying transfer payment of bills approved, reports, middle school, high school.
So what we have for you this evening is we want to show you all of our high school and middle school data for all the great things our students are doing. So what you're going to be looking at is the presentation is where our students right now are currently performing. So when we look at this data, it's a lot of information on what they can do on their own. This is without teacher help, what they do on their own, whatever they perform on the map testing and EOCs in spring of the year. Now, the hard part is, I'm sure that some of you already seen some of the information here. It might be a little bit uncomfortable to look at. But what we've done this year is, as Chris and I came in, our job has been to observe. We did not want to come in and change anything unless pretty much it was a dumpster fire. Those are the things that we attacked because our teachers here are doing some really amazing things. So we didn't want to come in and start changing things that they're already doing well. So whenever you look at some of this data, you'll see that from two thousand twenty-one to twenty-two, some of our scores have dropped. So what we found out with that drop is we have some gaps in our curriculum. Whenever I came in, I started looking for our curriculum. Well, there's nothing online and I found a bunch of binders in my office. Some were there, some were actually missing, some teachers came in and we didn't even have curriculum to give them. What I did is I just went to the state of Missouri, we're using some great standards that they have. So what, when we looked at that curriculum, the last time it's been updated is two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. So right now, our teachers are doing a fabulous job teaching the curriculum that we've given them, but it has not been updated. And there's a lot that's changed in education and the standards since two thousand seventeen, eighteen year. So our goal, as you're looking through these numbers, know that our goal over the next few years is, we've already started this year. We started with a scope and sequence, which is we took all the standards, the teachers have divided it up into our different units. Put the standards underneath them so they know exactly what's taught in each unit. We divided it up into how many weeks it needs to be taught. So right now, if a new teacher walks into our district, we have something to give them to say, hey, teach this. As we go on, we're going to do a pacing guide, which is more of a detail, what they're going to teach each year. Then we're going to add in our units of instruction, which is actually going to be detailed into what worksheets am I using? What assessments am I using? What tools am I using to teach this? So know, as you're looking at this data tonight, we have plans to make sure that even in the next year, hopefully all these scores will be going up. So we're going to start with our sixth grade app and a lot of these slides you're going to see, they're going to look very, very similar. The first thing you're going to see is the sixth grade math score. So this is for English Language Arts, this is our reading, our writing, our grammar. And so at the top line, and these are our sixth grade students, so this is the sixth grade testing. So these would be our students that are currently in seventh grade. So this is our sixth graders from two thousand twenty-two. So and as you look, we went up, we went up, and then we did go back down. Which, again, you're going to think, okay, what's the reason for that big jump? Right now, Chris and I weren't here last year, we're not sure what the teaching looked like. We're not sure even what the testing environment looked like. But we do know, like we said, there's some gaps in our instruction that we're going to work hard on fixing over the next couple of years.
So what, what I found interesting, why then, I know I'm jumping ahead.
That's right.
Seventh grade, this year, I mean, they dropped right back to normal. So, I mean, that looks like the sixty-two percent is an anomaly.
Yes, and, and it could be. Another thing you can look at is certain groups of kids that come through, of course, some are higher, some are lower, so it could be just an anomaly.
But then in twenty-two, they should have done better.
They should have, but this, so what you're actually looking at here, these are different groups of children.
But, so the twenty-two and seventh grade, twenty-two, seventh grade, then should have been higher the way I'm looking at it. My.
Twenty-one, sixth graders.
You are absolutely right.
Okay, and they weren't.
It should, so you're talking about like by jump ahead.
Yeah, if you go to the seventh grade.
He's comparing cohort.
Yes, so whenever we had, so our first one was, let me go back here. So they were at thirty-seven point eight in, oh, sorry, fifty-five point five would have been that one. Then we jump ahead, it's fifty-one point two. So they did drop a smidge, but whenever we look at those drops, that's not a significant drop. One that we would actually call a more recent drop is what I was saying.
That probably represents one student fewer from the last year to prior, when you have about fifty kids or so.
It was that sixty-two percent that I found interesting. Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Exactly, you went from sixty-two back to forty-seven, it's like, okay, why did they go up twelve percent in one year? And that takes, that should be more than just.
Should, that'll be four and a half or so kids. When you have a class of forty-five, twelve percent, each one's about two point.
I did do quite a bit of research on some numbers, crunching them, and if you wanted to go up three to five percent with, with every single grade level we have, truthfully, that's anywhere from two to four kids. So if we could grab anywhere from two to four kids every year and bump them from basic to proficient, that's where we're going to see actually those scores go up. And in bigger school districts, you're going to have to have a lot more kids, so small districts, they could be a bonus. But you are right, we want to grab those kiddos and move them up. And already, we do have plans this year. So next Monday, whenever teachers come in for PD, our afternoon is going to be spent with my math testing cohorts and my EOC groups. They're going to be looking at this data, they're going to be pulling out the standards our kids are low on. They're going to even pick some of those kids that might be on the bell. And we're going to really dig into that data and really work these next few months to bring those scores up. So we do have plans, and even the next week, to try to get things going. So then on this next one, you're going to see, so the picture over there to the left, this is going to be our current sixth grade students. So this is what they did in fifth grade. Now, at the bottom, that's evaluate data. So evaluate is a tool that we use for both math and ELA. And what it does, it takes all of our standards and it divides them into two different tests. And that's why when you look at that data, there's green and there's blue. Because if we tested the kids on all the standards all the time, that would be a lot of testing maybe over hours. So the green is one set of standards, the blue is another set of standards, so the tests aren't that long. So whenever you look at this, this is how our students are performing right now. So they ended up, the end of fifth grade at thirty-two point five, they started off this year at a forty-two percent. So right now, we're already higher than where we've been. Now, you might say, okay, so how does this data correlate to math test? I actually did some digging from last year, the evaluating data versus how the kids actually performed on the state testing. Actually, our kids on state testing either did the same or did better on state testing than they did on this evaluate. So this evaluate does give us good tools to use to actually help our students and know where they are. And again, this is how you get data, it's fabulous because it divides it all down into standards. So whenever a teacher has a test, they can actually pull the results from their students. And it shows which students are missing which standard. So then they can actually grab those students, do some remediation with them. They can also see, oh my gosh, my whole class didn't understand this concept. And they can actually go back and reteach that before the math test in the spring. So that's why this evaluate is a really, really great tool to use. And then we go into math.
So as we move from evaluative math, you're going to see a lot of the same kind of trends that over time we are gradually decreasing. There is a significant drop between twenty-one and twenty-two. You know, and, and as Ms. Sassen mentioned, we've just been looking a lot at what strategies our teachers are using. We are identifying our curriculum gaps and then just brainstorming what strategies we can implement next year. So next slide, we can see that our students finish at twenty-five percent. They're starting at about the same pace, but as we go from, throughout the season, throughout the year, you're going to see where they are. Not as significant here in sixth grade, but we'll see that there are some significant growth factors that are happening in seventh, eighth grade. Like Ms. Sassen said, our, our teachers are willing to jump in, they've really accepted looking at our scope and sequence. They're ready to look at our pacing guides and create. Um, science, with science, it's a little different because our, our students are only tested in fifth grade and then they're not tested again until eighth grade. The other thing that we have definitely recognized is that science and social studies don't have a standard-based assessment tool like, uh, like math and ELA do. There are some out there and we're kind of researching to see which one would be, would give our students the most significant increase and, and help our students be able to, to push up in their, in their testing. And so that's something that we're, we're taking a look at. The other thing that we really want to take a look at over the next couple of years is creating those benchmarks. And so we can see, right, if they're not tested from fifth grade all the way till eighth grade, every year, we want to see, well, how are they doing on those, on those standards? And so that's something that we did in North Kansas City, and I think it really gives our teachers a good look. And then as we're looking at our standard curve, our bell curve, will help us identify those kids that are on the level, that are kind of in between each level. And so that we can really help those kids push up into the next level.
And then we do the, our seventh grade data, so these are our seventh grade scores from last year, our current eighth graders is where we are right now. And if you look, there was a slight decline, then back up, and then just a slight decline again. So I mean, we're really staying fairly consistent in there. And meaning we're close above, yeah, we're above the state average for all but one. And that's something else that you want to look at also. Sometimes when you take off that bottom state average on there, you look at the scores, you're like, ooh. I mean, forty-seven percent of our kids, but when you look at the state average, that gives you a picture of what the average students in the state of Missouri where they're performing. So truthfully, right now, when you look at our math scores, we're really sticking right there in the seventh grade.
That really shows that our teachers are doing some great things in the classroom.
And so what we got here, these are our sixth grade math scores from last year, and these are our current seventh graders. So truthfully, if you look at where they were at the end of this whole year and where they started, I mean, they're already at fifty-five percent. And we're seeing that growth already this year, so I'm really excited to see what this seventh grade group is going to do on the math test with ELA. Because you can see that steady increase with them and at a higher rate, so I'm really excited to see where they can go next year.
What was the difference between orange and the green bubbles?
The, okay, so the orange would be like your basic, and then the green would be proficient. So whenever we look at the evaluate, and when you look at the math data, you have low basic, basic, proficient, and advanced. And our goal is to get our kids in that proficient and advanced category. So when you're looking at that evaluate, the yellow is basic, then the green is proficient. And you'll eventually get to, no, green is advanced and blue, we don't have any blue on there, blue is proficient.
So it's their mastery level of their standards.
And if you look at the top one is our average for the grade level, and then you can see the other two are dividing into the actual classes.
As the state standards get updated and changed, does, do the math tests change too, or is the math test roughly the same for all of its years?
Yeah, so actually, when we're looking at this data, when you look at the science, which we'll get to in a little while, in twenty-eighteen, they actually didn't get one. And that was because they were piloting the new standard. So when they moved from, so what they tried to do is move the Missouri Learning Standards and NGSS. They rewrote them so that they are more aligned to NGSS standards, not completely. But in that, in that year, that's when they were piloting that test and trying to match it with those new standards.
But for the years we're looking at, the math test was roughly the same for all of those years?
Uh, no, I remember in.
Did we say two thousand eighteen was when it was updated? So when it went from more of a memorization type test to more of a critical thinking piece. So that's also a thing that you can see with some of the, as it did do a downturn, some of it. It could be some of those critical thinking areas that we need to add to our curriculum as well, some of that rigor in there. So again, it's not that the teachers are not teaching what they need to be doing, we just don't have that rigor and that critical thinking in our curriculum yet. But we have plans to get there.
So this is an example of, again, we're seeing, I mean, there are some great things happening in the classroom, just going to look at our, our level of proficiency or mastery. There's not really a significant increase or decrease, but we're significantly above what the state averages. So something that we discussed is, is how can we even push our kids more? How can we identify districts that are, that are the same as us and, and almost even, you know, and, and push them to, to increase those numbers more? So when you look at this, you can see that our students ended at thirty-eight percent. And when they started, yeah, and when you started looking at their evaluate data, they're actually significantly lower than that. But when we look at each one, they are significantly increasing in their mastery levels. If you look at the green, they started at twenty percent, they increased by sixteen percent, and then increased by another seven percent after that. And that was even after the holiday break. So you can see that there are some great things happening in there. Again, we're trying to get into classrooms as much as we can so that we can see what are those great things that those teachers are doing? And what are some of those areas that we can identify that, that need improvement?
And the great thing is, for all of our middle school, all these evaluate scores are going up, which is really, really exciting for me. So then here's our ELA math scores, so this would be our eighth graders, so this would be our current ninth graders, would be that two thousand twenty-two. We did, and this, this one is a little rough to look at because it did slowly, slowly keep declining. Again, we're not sure what the real reason is, but everything that we've said, that curriculum piece, where we find those gaps, some of that critical thinking that we do need to add in there. Some of the extra pieces by looking at the classroom, seeing what we can add to our actual teaching. That's what we're going to look at for some of these gaps. Again, we don't know what they are from here, but we do know what we want to do next year to help improve.
Eric. Um, you said we last revised our curriculum and attempted to do scope and sequence in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, right? Well, there's a difference right there.
Hmm, exactly. So that two thousand seventeen, eighteen, that's the last time that we know curriculum was revised, it might have been revised since then. But I have not found any information showing that, but you can see that slow decline. And, and I do think that's the real reason, especially in that twenty-one, twenty-two that we still go back.
One thing that we're excited with ELA, reading and writing were taught separately up until this year. So I know that that's been the best practice for a while, so we're excited to see what kind of increase or change I don't think going forward.
And I was talking about rewriting our curriculum, this isn't something that's just going to happen within the next year. It's going to take some time, like I said, this year, our focus was that scope and sequence. Next year is going to be a pacing guide and maybe get one unit of instruction done. But for each course that we have, we're going to have to do this for every single course. And units of instruction, you could have five to twelve units, depending on what you're teaching. So I mean, it's going to take us some time to get it done, but we're hoping every step that we take, these scores are going to go better and better. So this is our seventh grade math test for ELA. And then this is our evaluate scores for our eighth graders right now. So again, they started off at forty-seven point nine and they ended that last year, they started off at fifty-six, and they're at sixty-eight right now. So again, it's really, really reassuring to see those numbers going up, so I'm really excited to see where they're going to finish.
Um, same, same thing as our seventh grade math scores, you're going to see just kind of that. That, and for, there is a little bit more of a decrease obviously from, in, in this one, but above the average. You know, the consistency of teaching there, it's the same teacher that was, that was there the whole time. When we look at this current years, you're going to see a significant increase. So they started at twenty-one percent and currently they're at a sixty-eight percent. And so we've seen significant growth today for math. Oh, science. Um, and so this is what we were taught, what I was, what we did earlier, twenty-eighteen, there wasn't any data that was sent to any schools just because that was piled here for the new test. And that changed significantly. I was actually an eighth grade science teacher in twenty-eighteen, and I will tell you that in twenty-seventeen, when we gave that math test, it was road memorization. It was literally look at experimental design, look at an experiment and pull out what is the IBDB, it was, I mean, it was, you, you essentially had to teach the, not teach the test, but that's, I mean, what it was. In twenty-nineteen, when they revamped that, it completely changed the way kids were tested. There was no more, there, instead of just all multiple choice, it may be a couple of paragraph. There was a totally different testing strategy that went to teaching eighth grade science. And so you had to do multiple select, a lot of inferring from very large articles and science, or scientific articles, application of data, critical thinking, there was, it was totally different test. And so you can kind of see that there was, I mean, there was a change there. I wish you could see the data from twelve seventeen, but it drastically decreased that, I know that's something that we looked at in my previous district.
To teach my eyes, I'm just curious because this was a thought I had as a parent at St. George. After COVID, I felt like a lot of teaching instruction became less hands-on paper textbook and more Chromebook videos, things of that nature. I mean, is that kind of the trend for our school here? Because I'm also wondering if that's having an impact on some of the decreasing scores for some kids because they're learning, having to learn a completely different way than they were raised. So I don't know.
And I, and I do, I do believe that, I mean, our kids, they really are on their Chromebooks and doing all their work through their Chromebooks during the day. The good thing is, we're using less paper, teachers are able to grade things quicker. So there's a lot of bonuses that go along with using those Chromebooks, which we got from COVID. So that's really helping our teachers. I do feel like though, that we could add some more of the collaborations, more of those project-based learning and those different things into our curriculum to elevate what we do have going on. So I think Chromebooks, and they're fabulous, but I think we could add a little bit more to it. And I do know that I had a few teachers in the next week or two, they're actually going to be doing some project-based learning PB, and they actually came to me and were wanting to go to this PB. So I was really excited when they asked me to go, I'm like, yes, let's do this, let's see what we can do.
I think one thing that we're really looking at are best practices, right? There are a lot of things that we've identified that, that may be our best practices right now. But teachers like Ms. Sassen, etc., are willing to pick up that shovel and do work to figure out how to use those best.
Well, it's just a change in our culture for the last three years. So I, I just feel like for some kids, it's, you know, learning, how do I learn now, like it's different.
It is, it's tough.
It is very different, but at the same time, there are a lot of technology skills that kids have to learn. But that may be, otherwise they won't be successful when they graduate. See whatever adventure they're on to next.
The other great thing is, our teachers are really, they stay in tune with our students and their needs. Some kids do find out that they're not doing as well on a Chromebook. I have had, have teachers who print stuff out for them and make accommodations, even though they really don't have to. They see that that kid's not learning that way, they'll print stuff out and do that kind of thing for them too. So we, we try to make sure that we're giving it to them the way that they need it. This is just the, that and they can work. So now, we're going to kind of transition into our high school, and the high school is going to be a little bit different because we're looking at EOCs, which that's end of course assessment, pretty much it's the math test, but it's actually given instead of each year, just like they do from third grade to eighth grade. It's just given at the end of a course once they're done taking it. And we do that with our Language Arts Two, Algebra One, Government, and Biology One is what we give it to. But I wanted to show you this, when they don't take it in at their freshman year in ELA, but I wanted to show you just from their eighth grade year, which is forty-two point five percent. They're at forty-nine to start with this year in ninth grade, and they're up to fifty-three percent. Now, you do see that it's a little stagnant in there, but we're going to look at some of those pieces and see what we can do to actually increase that as the year goes on. I'm very confident they're going to get there.
This is our Algebra One, and of course, data, and so you can see, and, and there was a gradual decrease in twenty-eighteen and twenty, twenty-one, but then a significant increase from that year to last year. And then we kind of bounced around, well, for three out of four years, we're above the state average, but as, like, we're.
Because I know last year the state average was thirty-two percent and we were above it, but I'd like to get even higher than that this year.
Yeah, it's not, doesn't say much about the state of Missouri when your proficiency level in college algebra or algebra, like college algebra is thirty-two percent.
It's terrifying because, because literally what they're saying is thirty-two percent of the kids in this grade level in the state of Missouri are proficient or advanced. That's it. It is kind of terrifying. But I want our kids here at Lynn to be way above that average.
Do we, do we know what happened in twenty twenty-one? I mean, that's fairly embarrassing.
That is, I am not sure since that was a couple of years before our time. I'm going to try to do some more digging and see what I can find. It could have been, that could have been. And I can only imagine at the high school level, I mean, I was teaching elementary at the time, so teaching elementary kids was way different. But I don't imagine teaching Algebra One to high school students during the year.
But the state average didn't go down. I mean.
We doubled.
I would, yeah, I would, I wouldn't be looking at a teacher in that case and saying, what the heck happened, but.
But those are some things that we need to do.
So this is just a more breakdown of where we are. You can see, I, I found this very interesting though, from a fifty-seven point five in eighth grade all the way down to a twenty-one. Obviously it's eighth grade where they're learning some of the skills of algebra, but not, I mean, it's not all algebra based, right? So when we look at just algebra and we're starting at a twenty-one percent, there is increase throughout the year. But again, we just are trying to get in the classrooms and insert best practices.
Just curious, kids coming in from St. George are, like, do you see if they're helping or setting back the percentages just?
I haven't been able to dig as much into that data as I'd like to, but that's something I can look into in the next few months and see what the actual.
I mean, I'm thinking say the eighth graders from last year or all the ninth graders, like they all came here. So I'd be nervous to be curious.
That is something we'll discuss in the last couple of days, but that's something.
And the other difference is these kids are moving from middle school to high school. There's definitely a shift in even just their own brains as they move up to the high school. So there's just all kinds of stuff that you can look at there.
That's not, yeah, that's not something we need to learn or we see that transition period. There's, there's always a dip.
Everywhere. Then we have our tenth grade gap. So these are our government EOC scores. And the thing with our government and our biology, our social studies, like Chris said earlier, we don't have any like yearly benchmark testing like the evaluate to actually tell us where these students are throughout the year. And that's something that we're really looking at this spring to see if we can find something for next year. Or have the teachers create some sort of benchmarks that they can take in maybe October, take it in maybe in January. So you can see, okay, where are the students? What do we need to hit before these EOCs come in the spring? But that's the piece that we're missing that we want to add.
Biology. With this one, I will say a really interesting and great conversation with our biology teacher who immediately recognized that what was happening in our classroom wasn't working. And so this year he is piloting and really looking at a new online curriculum for biology. Where along the way they are giving them those kinds of questioning, like you find out EOC map testing. So those new styles of questioning that, that we're seeing once NGSS was introduced into the science curriculum. So I thought that was, that was a great conversation. So he really wanted to see an increase in rigor, higher level thinking questions and application questions. And those critical thinking pieces that, that need to be signed. And so we're really excited to see what, what happens at the end of this year and what that data looks like.
So we're really glad that he reached out and we found that new book to use. Remember eleven, eleven grade? So these are LA two EOC scores. And these are big, awesome, not a bad job staying right in there. And I love how he picked it back up and back to sixty percent in two thousand one. So we are at least heading in the right direction.
And we had the same teacher in that?
We have, we had the same teacher in nineteen, twenty-one and twenty-two. There was a different teacher in two thousand eighteen. Though, and that is something that we found too, is the consistency also. I mean, if you look, there's been four different principals, teachers kind of come and go. We'd really like to see if we can get that consistently like you see here and keep some of our teachers and see what we can do. I'm really excited about that. So looking here, they ended up in sixty percent. They started off in fifty-one percent. But they've almost ended up at fifty-seven, back to where they were. So we're going to keep evaluating and keep going.
And then our ACT scores, we are fully aware that they have been decreasing over time. And I think it's a lot of what we're talking about. Looking at the gaps in our curriculum, the different strategies and best practices that are either, either used or not used. And try to revamp kind of the, the way we're thinking about educating the classroom. The other thing that we would like to do as we're creating this scope and sequence and pacing guide is include some of those ACT strategies, right? How can we in each one of our classes include some sort of piece that's going to help our kids when it comes time to the ACT? We also don't have currently, and as we dug around, haven't had in quite some time, ACT prep classes. There's also a ninth grade ACT pre-test that they can take that we are not currently doing. Which would give us some data several years before they actually go and take that test. And so all just things that we've been, we are, we're looking to work on over the next couple of years as we're doing this work.
We had a discussion of what, three years ago on ACT, whether we paid for it, whether we required it, didn't require it, where are we at right now?
So right now, all the juniors take the ACT, all are required to take it. And then they can take it again as seniors if they choose to. But that's our plan, but we would really like to do it a little bit earlier and do some of that pre-test stuff so that we kind of have an idea. And it also shows them what the test is like. A lot of these kids go in, you go into this long test and they kind of freak out because they're not used to that kind of stuff yet.
Are we still offering the class, the prep class?
We do not have any sort of ACT prep class. And we were even discussing, you know, if there's a way to do it, even as an after-school course. We're trying to throw some ideas around to see if we can get some sort of prep class for the kids that really want to take it.
I mean, when we were kind of digging into that, what we found was when we did offer that class, we couldn't get kids to sign up for it. So.
I was going to say, once I think it was required, but then, so it was required, it was for a while, but then it took away an extracurricular that other kids wanted to take. So then there was some.
I'd say fourteen, fifteen, something like that.
Which I think it's, it's really beneficial, isn't it?
Same, like, well, this too, to, they had to take the prep classes and I know that there did not and you could tell.
But I think that's.
I think ACT prep helps as an event, but probably more consistently if you want to see those improve. It really needs to be embedded in nearly every course that we have. And maybe not, you know, obviously in an extracurricular class, there's not going to be a one-to-one translation of that. But if you train that teacher on what ACT prep looks like, they can adapt their curriculum to at least present ACT type. ACT style questions, ACT style rigor. And there are things, what you don't want to do is have your student assessed on a format transition during the test. And I think part of what we're seeing is that, that, that's, that's what's happening. They're, they're being presented, they're experiencing and attempting new learning while they're being assessed. And the, the further you get from alignment and the further you get from preparation for that, the lower your score is going to get.
How many kids retake it?
I'm not sure how many kids actually retake it, but I know quite a few have this year.
Last year's number was forty-six students that we hovered between forty-six and fifty per a couple of years before that. And then maybe we had like fifty-five or fifty-six students maybe there in twenty eighteen.
And so this is everybody that took it, juniors and seniors are just the juniors that were required to take it.
These numbers are just our first, uh, first time our juniors took it. This doesn't include our retakes or the seniors in that, because it's just our kind of raw number. No reviews.
And I know I always suggest to any kids that are going to college, take it at least twice. I mean, go with your first score and then take it again because you're going to do better. So like I said, through this whole presentation, our goal is to show you where we are now. And then let you know what we're going to do in the next few years to actually make these scores increase. In fact, what we're doing next Monday is we're going to be doing that deep dive into our data that you just saw. We're going to have our teachers pull out the standards that we're actually missing. We're going to be using them as bellwork, using them as review from now until April, whenever we take a math test. And I hope just doing that will give us some little increase from where we are now. But the other things we're doing is we're going to continue to revise and build our curriculum. And like Chris was saying, we want to add more rigor and critical thinking to those pieces. So when they get to those math tests and they have to critically think, it's not just memorization anymore. You have to take what you learned in the classroom and actually synthesize it and use it in different questions on the test. We want them to be ready for that. And also we want to take that ACT review and actually put it in all of our curriculum across the board. We're going to create some response to intervention, we call that RTI time throughout the day, where we can actually keep looking at that evaluate scores, our benchmarks. We can actually grab some of those students that are missing some of those skills and give them some of that remediation during the day. And it won't be the same group of kids, we'll reevaluate, grab different kids. So we can get lots of kids back on that grade level where they need to be. We're also wanting to increase student engagement across the board. If kids aren't engaged, they're not going to learn. So that's also a big goal of ours this next couple of years. We want to utilize every minute of class time to its absolute fullest. And we just recently got done with our middle school scheduled for next year. And we're excited to try to keep those ELA and math grades or their classroom sizes down. So they can get more of that specialized instruction in ELA and math. That way hopefully by the time they get to high school, they've got that good basis for being successful. So that is the data that we have for you this evening. Any questions from you? Or if you have any questions, you can always leave it with us later too.
Not a question, comment. Appreciate you guys putting that together. A lot of work there. Seriously, did a good job delivering to us too. Um, I'm happy to see you guys concern yourselves with rigor in the classroom. I'm extremely happy to see you guys put the bullet point up there about increasing student engagement in the classroom out of all of our educators. Which is, that's the bedrock of any good teacher right there. If we, we, it's, it's a we, I'm not judging anybody on this, my whole entire career of that. Um, that's the exact way a teacher is going to improve him or herself right there. Um, I am kind of stunned that all of our teachers in our classrooms cannot immediately right now access a curriculum that is aligned with state standards. That's, I'm glad we're going to address that clearly, whomever else should have one for now. But anyway, I appreciate the emphasis, however I can help to, however I can support you guys in that effort, I will.
Thank you. So I have a comment. It will be just my children, it's their teenage voice. But I don't know how, whenever you get ready to do the EOC testing at the end of the year, or whenever you're doing it. But I think they've came home before and they're like, it wasn't very great. So, and so I don't know if there's some way to emphasize that in a way that's, it's not coming with importance on it. You know what I mean? Like their level of commitment to that test is not.
I'm smiling laughing because we've had this exactly.
I'm just saying. My kids and my kids said, and you know my kids well, but I'm just saying, maybe if you can, I don't know. I don't know, somehow not degrade on it, but still just maybe not say, well, this is not really for a grade. Because they're like, well, I don't really have to put all my effort against, it's not like it's going to matter.
Or where we hope to get to, that's a largely influenced by the culture that you established in terms of academics. We've got to build that sense of academic pride in our student body. And, and I know that'll only take us so far. We got, got to teach really well in the classroom. They have to want to do well for us. You know, that's a big one. That was my secret. I wouldn't that great of a, a math teacher, but I taught kids really well. Taught math, average, but I taught kids really well. And they've got to want to do well for us. It's got to make a difference what that number is for them. And we're going to work to build that culture in our classrooms and with our kids. We'll get there now.
I, I appreciate you taking the time to dissect all of this data because, I mean, if we don't, if we don't try to utilize it, then there, there's no way we're going to improve. So I, I appreciate you being blunt, straightforward and, and also sharing it in a way that's, it's easy to pick up the brain. So how many years will it take before we'll see improvements?
Well, I'm hoping we see at least scores go up for next year. Now I can't say they're going to go up two percent or fifteen percent, but I'm hoping just with what we're doing now, we're going to see them go in the right direction. We keep saying probably three, three to five years is kind of that. We're hoping in three years starting to see a major difference. Because that's probably about how long it's going to take to get a curriculum built, created and good to go.
I will say. I underwent this process in New York City and I don't think, we did it in three years, but we, we had PLT time. We had PLT days where we could come in, we had similar workshops where we were given lots of time. So, you know, we're trying to find creative ways for, to find time for our teachers to do this, but it's a lot of work. It takes a lot of time. It takes them a lot of giving that perspective to do that. So it's three years, but I would say it could take three to five.
Because I know like this year, we've used the majority of our professional development days, creating that scope and sequence. Because my goal was by the end of the school year, I want to have at least something down on paper. So that we have something ready to go for next year, just in case a teacher leaves and takes that binder with them. I wanted to have something ready to go and it did, it took almost all of our, and even this next PD day, we're going to use half of it, working still on that scope and sequence.
Would you say most teachers have that folder to hand over to the next teacher?
Most do. I want to say we could find two or three.
Okay.
For where we're at now.
Over, but for where we're at now, every single teacher will have that scope and sequence and they'll have it ready to go for next year. So at least if a new teacher comes in, they'll be like, okay, look, here's, here's the units, here's what I at least need to teach. I might not have all the resources here that the teacher before had, but at least I can find what I need to teach.
And that was going to be my next question. Do teachers have the tools they need to, to support this? Like if they don't have all the resources, I mean, are they requesting it or do they know what they need?
Also, I think a lot of that is also, like I would tell you, I was discouraged using a textbook. Like I was never anything that I used in my classroom. So, but I was taught a lot of strategies and skills on how to create that curriculum. That's something I'm working with our teachers on. A lot of them just don't know how to do that. So that's something that we are, they're, they're eager to learn and they want to do that. But it's just a skill that you have to show them, any of them professionals about how successfully they can do that.
And truthfully, it's not so much the resources, it's the time. We just need that time to let the teachers really dig into what they want to create in this curriculum and the time to actually put it together. But that's, time is of course a precious commodity.
It's going to be a challenge for us in the coming years. Scope and sequence, pacing document only gets you, your scope is almost always a hundred percent of the time. It's what you teach, it's Missouri learning standards. Sequences and what order you decide to teach them. Pacing document is how long you spend teaching each of those things. That's a very crude curriculum. It's what I need to teach and what order and about how long I should teach each thing. Eventually will, part of this process is instructional delivery also, so that we've alluded to best practices quite a bit this evening. So there, there is what you teach and in what order and how long. But now what are the best ways to deliver that instruction? What does research tell us is the most effective way to reach kids with that? Then there are all the resources that support that. Then there's assessment, formative and summative. Formative just means it's kind of like what we looked with the red and orange dots. That's formative. It just tells you where your kids are at then, but it's not the end test. Summitive is the final test. We've got to line out formative assessments all the way that will actually help us predict the summit of test. We'll be able to say, we know if we're going to, not going to do very well, it's going to be on these three standards. And then that's where we blitz right before the EOC and say, we know our top three. And then we blitz those with our kids to try and get them to the same level. I agree, where, where you've done nothing, we're going to see an immediate improvement in my opinion. That'll only be repeatable after the third year. You'll teach it to other people the fifth year and by your seventh year, it's just your way of life. And you're just, you're doing well. I, I'm pretty hopeful by what we're capable of doing. I think both of these guys have stolen my shovel-ready phrase. We do have a pretty shovel-ready staff. We're not going to staff presenting this and them going, we don't want to do it. They're saying, well, tell me a little bit more about what you're trying to do. I really appreciate that on their behalf and on the teacher's behalf. We'll get there.
All right. Thank you very much. Retentive report.
I will try and, try and be brief. Same sections of component, culture, climate, relationships. No, no real change, my effort there, just trying to stay present and engaged a little bit throughout the entire community. It is, culture is actually a component of our improvement plan for next year of everyone's. Staff dinners restarted, just sent out an invitation to about fifteen staff members to, to come out to the, to the house. Part of our improvement plans, which is important, went through an exercise with ALT. It's all blurring together, but a week or two ago where we embedded metrics in our existing district improvement plan. I'm going to polish those off, get them to. Um, I'm going to polish those off, get them to our administrators so that they can create metric-based improvement plans for their campuses and programs. Personnel and staff think this is the time. Uh, we are looking at needing a fourth grade teacher as our elementary school continues to grow. We're right on that cusp with forty-six uh, third grade students where if you go to, you got way twenty-three in each classroom, which is way too many. Uh, and at forty-six, that does put us on the small side there, but it is, I think it's in our best interest where our students at to, to continue trying to drive that down. Hiring season yeah, is now, interviews are occurring right now. People are beginning to start looking for jobs. So look for our uh, contract and hiring uh, closed session minutes to, to get a little bit longer. Uh, professional development, more of a reminder, our PD process or our PD plan that we have approved in previous years was actually an approval process. And all it did was outline if I want to go to a professional development, what's step one through six and getting it approved. That's great. Uh, but the element that we're actually adding to that is that where you want to go needs to be in line with our campus program and district improvement plans. So for engagement, part of that process will be not just I submit it and if I've got the paperwork filled out, I go to this conference. There'll be, the, the principals will be involved in that committee process and will actually be auditing those. Oh, you're going for engagement? That is in our campus improvement plan. Awesome. Debrief them on the way back, see what we can spread around to the rest. So that's definitely going to be a change for uh, our staff next year. Uh, so know that that's coming. Uh, facilities, uh, we'll talk a little bit of long-range planning and the RFQ for architects. But uh, big things, changing a lot of light bulbs. We rented a scissor lift here last couple of days. We actually closed the cage on the lights in the, the elementary uh, gym so that they're not exposed. Uh, so we're doing those types of things, still working on PD plan. The fix app, something that Mr. Wilson sent out to all of us and engaged the entire campus in submitting work orders and progress monitoring that. Uh, for a couple of our seasons coming up, we're looking for about a three-day window to repair our track and repaint it. Uh, we've had uh, Cole Steinbeck come in from uh, I believe it's Big Country Constructions, helping us with our shop put field out there. Weather is killing us there and we really, we're about to polish up the long jump pits. Uh, if we can get it dry enough to really blade that out nice and smooth, we're going to seed it and throw some straw over. Maybe about five or six more yards of sand and, and we'll be ready to go there. We also are going to work on the infield of our baseball field and work on some drainage. Uh, still responding to facility needs and repairs. I think we had another HVAC issue uh, on Monday. Uh, Mr. Wilson was looking forward to doing a couple of other things that day, but ended up being HVAC. Uh, the RFQ energy audit, uh, that will go out March first uh, through the UD and the News Tribune. And that will end uh, that request for qualifications, March fourteenth. Uh, athletics, uh, outside of the facilities planning, uh, just looking at funding those programs fully through this budget is a priority. And which gets us to budget, planning season is upon us. My desk has no less than two hundred sheets of paper checking what we have done, what we would like to do. So I'll be spending a considerable amount of my time there. Lot to consider, uh, increased costs due to inflation, preventative maintenance. Uh, looking at competitive salary, can we just add a step or are we going to bump our base again? Um, I'll be working on financial applications for federal funding through the spring, requesting funds from last year's apps. Uh, we are in a good position to do better and more. I want to let you guys know that uh, we'll be looking at how we might place ourselves in a better position. I have reached out to Howard Neely, uh, who is a guru in Missouri finance. He's agreed to, to give me some uh, to, to be a mentor for me. And I feel a lot better after reaching out to him. Uh, just, just knowing when they say, hey, that's on screen fifteen, I don't know where screen fifteen is. It's in our core data now I know, but I'm, I'm having to ask a lot of questions and kind of go the long way around, but it is numbers. So eventually uh, it'll make me smile. I just need to understand it a little bit better.
Question? All right, very good. Thank you. Yeah, our discussion or request for others, transportation, high school data review.
Uh, high school data review ended up there when it shouldn't. The auditors, uh, we are due for that. We don't have the option to extend, so we have put that out for bid. We've gotten a couple of responses for that. We'll be bringing those to us the next board meeting, uh, and see what we're interested in taking a look at. Transportation, we had a three-year contract that ended this year. We do have a provision in line item two that says by mutual agreement, we can extend the contract annually. I reached out to Joe, uh, and just asked him, hey, are, are you interested in that? Uh, of importance to you guys, inflation is going to be mentioned a lot. So cost of fuel, tires for buses are up a couple hundred bucks. So here's what we decided to do if you're agreeable. You and I are going to sit down and talk about what is reasonable considering the increased costs on his side. We're going to bring that back to you in the March board meeting as an option. And we're going to ask you then, do you want to put it out for bid or are you interested in extending for a year?
When did we last? When, is that a yearly contract or?
Transportation, three years ago, three years, three school years.
Don't we have to put it out for bid?
Provision two says that in our contracts is that we don't have to, and if you look at uh, forget the policy regulation. Uh, but it says that should the board choose to uh, maintain or establish a consistent relationship with a local or proven provider, you can choose to extend those contracts without putting out for bid. The auditors, when we get those, we'll open, we'll bring the result to you. And I'll bring the results of Joe and I's conversations. So you guys can decide whether we're interested in going out for bid or not.
So it was last bit three years ago?
Last bit was three years. This is the third of those three years.
Okay. Any other questions there? All right, RFQ architect for?
Here's a question. Uh, in uh, adopting and creating a long-range plan, we need the help of a long-range facility and architectural firm. In tandem with our RFQ for an energy audit, we would like to post March first and the eighth and solicit architectural long-range planning firms to give us just an RFQ. Tell us what you're about and what you might be able to help us out with. Uh, if we are agreeable to that, then we would need to take a vote to move forward with presenting that as an RFQ. Discussion if we would like to push it, or we may need to take a vote if that's something that you're interested in. I do think it's a good idea for comprehensive long-range planning, that the brand-new guy, I'll, I'll do a decent job, but we deserve better than decent. So just put it out there and see. Uh, there are a lot of good companies out there that can help us out.
So the plan would be not just a select one for planning, but it'd be actually to select a district architect?
Yes.
Questions there? It'll at least give us some idea of what we could do, what it will cost. And if we ever did, when, I shouldn't say it, when we get to the point of doing something with the middle school. We'll at least have something to take to the public with regard to a concept drawing, right? Which should be the first step to do anything, I think.
I think that the public is a better idea of what we can best do with our acreage and facilities. I think having a long, a long-range plan is.
Which in the state of Missouri, you select an architect or a professional designer and then you negotiate the price. Rather than, which is super counterintuitive. I mean, you would think, okay, we're going to find the cheapest person out there. You find the best qualified person and then you negotiate a, a price with them.
The, the way that it's written is specifically to keep school districts from bargain basement shopping. They, they want you to choose somebody who will do a good job first. Yeah, of course you have the opportunity to reject uh, what they present, but then you'd need to have to, you'd have to go out again and do an RFQ. But the idea is that they're putting kind of a stopgap in there to keep you from just choosing the lowest bidder, is I think the idea. So if we're interested in moving forward, I feel more comfortable if it was a vote considering we voted on the last RFQ for the energy audit as well.
So you want to vote to go out for an RFQ or?
For architect.
Okay.
District architect.
All right. Can I get a motion? For Bob to invite architects to submit RFQs?
I'll make a motion that we put out an RFQ for architect first.
I have a second.
A second.
Further discussion. All those in favor raise your hand. Opposed, same. All right, what can do? Action item, approve the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar.
Uh, the only update here is I did receive some feedback about potentially exchanging Mondays for a spring break. That did come up in our calendar committee meeting. Uh, the group felt like that wasn't something that they were willing to do at this time as a staff. But it is something, I just wanted to follow up on that, is something that was considered as exchanging some five-day weeks along the way for that spring break. The committee just felt like that wasn't a direction that they wanted to go.
Should probably ask to my question about two or three weeks from now.
I bet, I bet. I am concerned. I'll tell you guys, uh, I, this is going to sound very negative, but I, I really don't mean it. It can just be emotionally exhausting to teach from Christmas break all the way through that five months. A lot of times we really rely, because you're giving so much of yourself on just uh, an emotional release from the commitment that's required when you have twenty, thirty, a hundred and thirty kids uh, that you're taking care of. I would like to see us take a look eventually at breaking up that four or five months in the spring and just giving our staff a mental health break at some point. I will miss four-day week or not, I will miss spring break this year. I honestly will.
All right, so you need a need a vote, okay, have a motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar?
I move, we approve the twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three calendar.
Can I get a second?
One second.
Further discussion?
You don't have to worry about the changes to the last four.
Yeah, I was, but there, it should say twenty-three, twenty-four calendar.
For the motion consecutive to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar. Did I get a second? Needed, all of them, no further discussion. All those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, same. Calendar is approved. Approve the twenty-three, twenty-four health insurance rates.
So uh, update, we talked a lot about this in the fall. Uh, inflationary costs and influences on our benefits package. Here's the bottom line. They, they went out for bid and did some mitigating measures as far as specialty drug program. And we talked a little bit about the bolt-on that was uh, kind of a subsidy program for staff members that required very expensive specialty. Uh, for us, that was four of our staff members actually had a specialty drug on the list. As far as we know, we've only had not one issue, but one report back to us and they felt like that that was going well and that their needs were being met. That move alone completely mitigated our potential increase in premiums. So our staff will not experience an increase in premiums at all next year. And we will not experience an increase as a district. Uh, right now, preliminarily, I'm looking at maintaining uh, the district commitment as I get closer to the end of the budget. Of course, if we can help staff uh, there, we will. But right now, we're looking at maintaining it's exactly as we were before. When we did have the threat of uh, five to twelve percent increase cost, but we're good. They figured out another one.
Okay, that's easy.
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four health insurance rates? Second?
A second.
Further discussion?
Really nice that one thing is.
Yes.
All those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, same. Health insurance rates are approved. Uh, do you need a motion to change March, I guess we do change the March board meeting to March twentieth? We talked about that last month, didn't we?
No, we didn't. Uh, I actually made the request after a personal commitment uh, on the twenty-first. One thing I would like you to be informed of is on the twentieth, that Monday is actually, is that parent-teacher conferences uh, that end at seven o'clock. So we do have some overlap there. Uh, we'll have, hopefully we'll maybe have a larger audience for the board meeting. If you'd like to avoid that, then we could potentially move it to the twenty-second, if you would rather.
Doesn't matter to me. Anybody have a preference? Everybody look at calendars?
I don't think the twentieth will really impact much at all. I don't think it'll impact parent-teacher.
Like we can encourage friends to come by and sit in the meeting.
They'd have a great time.
Yeah.
Can I have a motion to change March board meeting to March twentieth?
I move, we change March board meeting to March twentieth.
Can I have a second?
A second.
Further discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, same. What should carries? Uh, extend bank bid one or two years?
Though that is two of our three options. We could put it out to bid or we have the option of extending it for an additional year or extending it for two more years. So the big question is, put it out for read, extend one or extend two years our contract.
The discussion?
I'm trying to look up what we were at and the rate that we are at right now. Adjust monthly, and so as you all know, rates have gone up, so that's benefited school. Uh, I would think that it doesn't seem like, as far as I can tell, it doesn't make any difference one year or two. Either way, I think the, the current agreement that we have is good and if we, if we extend it for one year, that's, I mean, that's fine and we can, I don't know what, what a year holds. I'm really, I'm really kind of baffled as to what, how long rates are going to continue to increase and how long they're going to stay that way. Really one year or two, it doesn't make that much difference, but if we have the option, if we have the option to take one more year, the way I understand it, we could do another year after that.
We can.
So um, that's what I would suggest, but either way is fine.
What's, I mean, what is the benefit of extending, not extending? I mean, what, what does the agreement state? That, I mean.
It's just nothing other than they're yielded on our deposits and some other fee type things other, outside of that, honestly, I would defer to your expertise, Mark. It does.
So that's like fixed in the contract.
Yeah, it's all fixed in the contract. So basically right now, we would have the option if we like, we decided the current environment has changed. We don't like what we have. We think we can do better. Now's a good chance for us to get out, but I don't think that that is the case, so keep going. Just basically gives us the option right now if we want to out.
To what I hear is reevaluate in one year, considering we're in a good circumstance now and we can always extend the good circumstance after that year for an additional year.
Sure. The flip side of that. I mean, if you're wrong, those banks are going to be pretty darn close to all being the same what they submit, aren't they? And it's not like next year, things fall apart, we're going to get a worse rate. It's all going to be tied to some sort of prime rate or something like that. What do we want to do? One or two? Bob, what do you want to do? I don't care. I mean, if we do two, we don't have to do this again next year.
That, that was my first thought. That was that was my first thought. I was trying to figure out how to rephrase where it sounds like I don't want to do more work. But if we feel like we're in a good position, and I do feel like we are, there is no harm in extending two years. I don't think we'll be in a bad position.
But anybody opposed to doing two years? Okay, can I get a motion to extend? Our current bank bid by two years?
I'll make a motion that we extend our current bank contract for two more years.
Good second. Further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Both the same, all right.
Do I need to say?
Yes, you do. Should we do that again, just to clean, clean that up?
Yeah.
Got a motion in a second, raise your right hand if you approve. Opposed, abstain. There we go. Motion carries. Fresh ideas contract.
So as many of you know, we were presented with the seven percent increase and communicating with the fresh ideas. Staff, we did negotiate a five percent increase. This is a little bit of Kentucky windage, because it depends on how much our kids eat and how many meals are served. At five percent, we're looking at about fifty-seven hundred and fourteen dollars of additional cost to finish out the year. As of my calculation, which was about a week ago or so, so we would be looking at signing an agreement to finish out the year. With fresh ideas with that five percent increase.
Discussion. Better than seven.
Yes.
Still hacks me off. I'm gonna vote no, just for the principle of it. I hope we pass it, but. Fair blow, do you want to vote no with me? That'd be fine.
I'm not coming to make peanut butter.
We just, we better have our vote straightened out before we vote. It does hack me off to no end, that somebody would come into the middle of semester, the school year and do something like that. Not even the middle of school year, halfway through the second, second semester, it's just.
They could have made it to the.
I shouldn't swear in a school board meeting, but it does make me want to. Further discussion? Any other comments? Okay, can I have a motion to?
The five, five percent.
Approve the five percent increase to the fresh ideas. To to allow Bob to negotiate the new contract with fresh ideas.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I'll say.
Further discussion?
So, so this is retroactive, right? So it goes back to January first, even though they showed up at our meeting. After, at the end of January, instead of hold on, we we do, okay.
It goes back to January.
Yes.
You can't make it up, can you? Neil, make sure you put that in the paper. Yeah, yeah, okay. So. Those in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed, the same. Hey, motion carries. Yeah, that's that's a way to run business.
That's just to the end of the year, that means next year.
That's right.
All right. Sped sped track?
Sped track, little background, so just like we've talked a little bit about in the presentation of data, being able to track our student achievement, that is incredibly important. There is a version of that data tracking for special education students that are directly correlated to their IEP goals. So that's one advantage. We'll be having, we'll have to move when we go from Tyler to Infinite Campus. We'll either buy the software that goes with Infinite Campus, and there is some advantages of having an all-in-one package. But most would tell you, and by most, probably eighty percent of special education professionals would tell you. That the Infinite Campus version is not nearly as good, nor is it nearly as user-friendly as SpedTrack. SpedTrack, SpedTrack will cost us about four thousand dollars the first year. We can have it for a few years or a few hundred dollars less if we commit to more than one year. But I would like for our staff to use it for one year. There is a few hundred dollars. Let's reevaluate and see if it's the tool for us, but it is the premier data. And special education document and. Tracking evaluation, you name it, it is the best around. Ms. Glenn presented that to Mr. Moore, filled in my as an option instead of moving to Infinite Campus. It'll cost us about fifteen hundred dollars more than the equivalent module in Infinite Campus. So it is a slightly slight premium, but it is by far the best tool out there to track, monitor, evaluate, and run your special education program. We're just looking to get a premium product for that. We haven't had anything. If we have a document here, we have made that home rule. It's very unique for each special education teacher. This would also give us a document vault where we would all be using the same documents. We'll streamline what we do a great deal and give us a data component to improve on.
Questions?
Does it offer lots of training? Like I said, you're saying it's user-friendly and?
Yes, there are training components that come along with the adoption of.
Has anyone used it before?
Yeah, actually, several of our staff that we stole in from other districts are elated to find out that we're considering going to SpedTrack. So we will have some in-house experienced users. Our big thing, and this is something we'll talk about, Mr. Mimics alluded to this earlier. We can have the best laid plans for improvement, but if we don't give our teachers, so what I call captured time. If you ask them to do it when they're supposed to be cooking dinner on Wednesday night, you, there's one level of attention there. We're have to figure out how to get some of our teachers to preload SpedTrack, preload Infinite Campus. By trying to incentivize maybe coming in to do some professional development during the summer, one of the things that we contemplated is. Choosing a Monday somewhere in the year that we said, well, if you'll come in to preload in the summertime, maybe SpedTrack or Infinite Campus or curriculum. Then that Monday will be a Monday that you you won't participate in our professional development that day. We'll do professional development then also, but almost like a comp day, does that make sense? And so we are trying to find somewhere to incentivize our teachers front-loading our PD. Having time, our our regular staff comes back for two days before we start a school year. Gotta spend one day getting back here, another day getting your room ready. It leaves little to no room. We've been taking care of that on Mondays, which is great, but you don't get that first Monday until you're nearly a month in school. It's best practices to start the year with that learning and start your, kind of your habits and your regiment using it. Yeah, we're always concerned about when are we gonna, when are we gonna get people trained up? I think we do have an advantage, and it's one of the most popular, and we have current staff that already.
Can I get a motion to approve the purchase of SpedTrack?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of.
Can I have a second? Favorites or other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Or inflation, Coca-Cola price increase.
Coca-Cola made us aware of a beverage pricing increase effective March fifteenth. The products that we use, the increase is ranged from zero to thirty-six percent for an average increase of fourteen point eight percent. All of that, those increases are below kind of our retail concession prices. Like when you go to the vending machine, we're talking about the vending machine. So we don't anticipate passing those along, but at a fifteen percent increase, the average impact to soda funds that go to each campus are gonna impact them about. Three thou or three hundred dollars a year on an average of about two thousand dollars of income. They have, so we are gonna take a hit for that. I don't anticipate moving the cost of a Coke to two dollars and fifty cents for a kid, so. Like to present this as, you know, we just soak it up, and we're gonna have to figure out a different way to 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 get some money to celebrate staff.
Being like your standard twenty-ounce bottle of soda, what did it go with as a percentage?
Twenty ounce, fifteen percent. Our cost went from a dollar to a dollar fifteen.
When was the last time they increased the price?
Coca-Cola, I'm not aware of that.
I wonder, I mean, if you were gonna tell me that that's this year, I'd say that's nuts, but if it's been five years since they increased the price. I mean, I don't ever remember here, I'm not sure, whatever or not, but.
Been probably five or six years.
So it's probably.
I just know because of being the athletic booster club, there have been issues with certain things being sold, not quote products. The topic of the contract came up a few times, and so it had to be looked up, and it was. I'm fairly certain the last time the contract was looked at was when Dr. Bashan was here.
So this is, this is just, this is the contractor, they're just telling us we're gonna increase the cost, clearly.
They're just telling us we're increasing.
So there's really nothing to.
Our decision would be, do we want to go with another provider for those products, or do we want to maintain our relationship with Coke? I personally feel like if we go out to bid or start shopping there, our relationship with Coke probably helps us there. I don't think we're going to get much of any advantage. I think the opposite may be true if we go out to.
Okay, so there's really nothing to vote on?
We're not gonna change.
Okay. I mean, our contract just goes in perpetuity.
It is, actually.
Okay. Okay, very good. Next regular meeting will be March twentieth of twenty twenty-three at six thirty. With that, I will take a motion. To adjourn to closed session.
Move, we adjourn to closed session pursuant to RSMO six ten point zero two one. Subsections thirteen relative to personally identifiable employment information, three personnel actions, six personally identifiable student information. One legal actions involving a public body and or privileged communications among that body and its representatives at parties.
Can I have a second?
Oh, second.
We'll call a vote. Mark?
Yes.
Lori? Naomi?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And I am a, we adjourn to closed session.